I got a minute. Oh, I did the very first time, but I would absolutely love to do it again. How does it go again? I.
What are you gonna do?
I am. You're right.
Yeah, they were asking last night who was coming over as commissioner. Oh, yeah. January one.
Trying to.
January.
Bad idea.
I'm up to you actually. You could have my unbelievable.
Oh, yeah. All right, we got nine o'clock, guys. It's close meeting order. Federal agents to play the United States of America into their public, which sustains our nation. In the fiscal, the public see justice. Roll call. Jenny David. Here. Frank Scott.
Yeah, here.
Mark Cerber. Brandon Becker. Ron Vaughn.
President.
Item two, approval of the agenda. There is something I would like to change under item fifteen. The closed session, item two, the implementation of the county's payroll system. I would like to move that to item G and make claims item H. So no close.
There is another.
There is a, there is another subject underneath closed session.
I'm good.
I'm gonna make that motion. I need support on that if.
Support.
If a motion with support, is there any discussion on that? Do we need roll call?
I just.
All in favor?
I.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Is there any other?
I'll move, I'll move to accept the agenda with. Change. Support.
We have a motion commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Van to approve the agenda with the stated changes. I'm all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item three, review of minutes, three A, September twenty second, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting minutes.
I was able to read the minutes. This morning.
Good.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. Support.
We have a motion commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Servic to approve the September twenty second, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item three B, October sixth, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Those minutes were delivered to me this morning and I was able to read those. Now, except for by us presented, support.
We have a motion commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Van. To approve the October sixth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item four, public comment on agenda items only. This is agenda items only. State your name for the record. Speak only to the chairperson. Stand behind the podium when speaking. Limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the, in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item five correspondence, we receive correspondence from. What county is that?
Go, go give it.
Go give it county related to auto insurance reform, Iron County related to election integrity, Iron County related to auto insurance form. Those have been received and filed. Item seven, new business. Or excuse me, item six, action on consent calendar. Is there any that you guys are willing to?
Let's take them one by one. You're, you're running.
I mean.
You're running a thirty-five, thirty-three at a forty-five speed right now, so we can take them one by one.
What's that mean?
You gotta be able to know what a thirty-three record is to the forty-five record.
I don't know either. Is there something you want? Are you able to follow?
Yeah.
Okay. Item seven, resolution to approve the purchase quote. I think we talked about this. The judge came to us in the committee of the whole. This is to purchase that twenty twenty-two Ford Transit Connect at a total cost not to exceed thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Upon the completion of the purchase, the resolution authorizes the sale of two thousand and seven Dodge Caravan at public auction.
Motion to approve the resolution. Support.
We have a motion commissioner Scott with support from commissioner Servic to approve the resolution to purchase the van. Any discussion on that? This is for probate court in front of the court. Roll call vote. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Frank Scott. Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Item seven, the resolution to approve the patrol car authentication. This resolution is sponsored by information technology director Tom Spencer, recent purchase and. Eight dispatch system, the CAD system by the nine-on-one emergency dispatch authority allows law enforcement personnel to access important information in real time from in-car computers. Oklahoma County purchases an annual subscription to propriety software that allows sheriff deputies to access dispatch information in the field. Approval of the resolution will allow police departments from the, the city of Rose City and the city of West France to access CAD information through the county subscription.
The commotion, the resolutions presented.
We have a motion commissioner Servic with support from commissioner Van. Is there any discussion on that? Roll call vote. Jenny David. Yes. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn. Item seven, C, resolution to approve the twenty twenty-two report of taxes to be portioned. Portion, apportion pursuit to the general property tax act. This resolution is sponsored by the equalization, equalization director Randy Booth, section thirty-seven of the general property tax act requires a county board of commissioners to hold an. Apportionment session and approve an apportionment report in October of each year. Approval of the resolution will provide final authorization for the levy of property taxes upon which taxing authorities depend to provide educational help, economic development, public safety and other services which are important to the well-being of the county and economy in Oklahoma County residents.
Motion to approve resolution.
We have a motion commissioner Servic.
Support.
Support from commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion?
You read it very well.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Roll call vote. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to appoint a member to the Department of Human and Health Services. This is sponsored by the Oklahoma County Department of Health and Human Services Board, section forty-six of the Social Welfare Act, establish a county social service board of three members to whom are. Appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The term of board member Susan Harts will expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and Ms. Harts has confirmed her desire to, her desire for reappointment. Approval of the resolution will confirm reappointment of Ms. Harts to a term ending on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Check their move to approve. The board.
Motion from commissioner Servic with support from commissioner Van. Is there any? Any discussion on that?
This Sue's been a long time. Work for VHS for the player's wife, and she's very dedicated. She's currently the chair. Board, so. Very appropriate. She doesn't deserve. No fantastic job.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Frank Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Resolution to appoint a member to the Sabal Valley Committee Mental Health Authority Board, item seven E. This resolution is sponsored by Sabal Valley Committee Mental Health Authority. The Board of Commissioners approved an enabling resolution to create the Sabal Valley Committee Mental Health. Authority pursuant to the mental health code. Sabal Valley Committee Mental Health seeks appointment of a new board member to fill the term of a member who recently resigned. Approval of the resolution will confirm appointment of commissioners Mark Servic to the Board of Directors for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I'll make that motion.
Support.
We have a motion with support from Mr. Van. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Servic, you're willing in line?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call vote. Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Item seven, F, resolution to approve agreement for extension services. This resolution is sponsored by the Michigan State University Extension. It is a mission of MSU to help improve. To help people improve their lives through an educational process that applies knowledge to critical issues, needs and opportunities. MSU Extension meets this mission by providing extension, extension educational programs in agricultural and agribusiness, children and youth development, including four-H, health and nutrition and community, food and environment. Approval of the resolution will authorize an agreement with MSU Extension to provide services to Oklahoma County residents for fiscal year twenty twenty-three at a cost not to exceed eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to accept the resolution and support.
We have a motion commissioner Van, support commissioner Servic. Is there any further discussion on this? Roll call vote. Ron Vaughn. Jenny David. Yes. Frank Scott.
Yes. Yes.
Item seven, G, this is the implementation of the county's payroll system.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is implementation of the county's payroll system. It's going to be open for discussion. How do you want to lead this discussion, I guess? Question. Question what? Question was, was brought to us if all, which I was under the understanding throughout this, this conversations that have occurred, that all hourly employees were clocking in. Under further investigation, it sounds like that is not occurring.
Right.
Under sheriff, would you like to come up?
Wow.
Can you explain to us what is happening?
Yes, I didn't know there was a question.
Yeah, what, right now, what is your department doing with the, we're talking about the hourly, not the salary employees? Of your department.
Yeah, so they are recording their hours. There is no clock in, clock out. So they go in and enter their hours that they've worked.
Now, I, I guess the question is, is, is why, when this is easily accessible, they can clock in from their phone, they can clock in from a, a, a neutral point, a time clock. We've made this very easily unless there's something that we're not understanding. Why, why are they not doing that when they are hourly employees?
Correct, but when we set it up, some of the deputies and stuff do start from their house, the school resource officers, that type of thing. So they're not using the clock in, clock out. And with the shift at work, that's, we just set it up to where it was easier for the employees and sheriff's office to just enter their hours versus clocking in, clocking out.
What, I guess, why is that easier?
Because we had people starting from home as primary.
How many people are driving cars?
Yeah, your school resource officer and the K nine.
The K nine officers, command officer.
Correct.
Yeah, other command officers driving cars. Okay.
Yeah, the sergeant's still.
But other command officers are driving too. Cars.
Your detective does.
Sheriff.
Sure.
Those are salary employees though, correct?
Sheriff is, detective is hourly.
So I, I guess what we've been trying to, to manage for one is overtime. Or two is the comp time, which there was a, a issue when our auditor came in and it looked at the comp time. There is, there is. I hate to say errors, but some things that she had found in, in the couple that she did audit. So implementing this system was supposed to hopefully stop that.
But it has with the comp time for sure.
Okay.
Now leave us to the cap on. Comp time has been taken care of. The overtime, we're, we're trying to get that under control and just made a new hire, so we're hoping that, or once we get bodies back and they're given assignments, that they'll come under control.
So right.
Part of the clock in, clock out, the question is, that's the way we set it up. It was just easier for us, the sheriff's office to have the employees put in their hours versus clocking in, clocking out, depending on where they're starting.
Why would that be easier? Why would that be easier than on your phone hitting whatever time you start and whatever time you stop? Why would that be easier?
Just depends on what they're doing, what they're getting called out to. If you have employees that are working from home, they wouldn't be able to do that. Coming from home. You just set it up across the board that they. They entered their own hours. We verify that as supervisors that they follow their shifts. We can put notes as far as overtime, if they have overtime or. Any type of thing so that we can verify what that overtime is for.
Doesn't that make it harder? I, I mean, that sounds like that's a lot more time for you specifically. Now, don't get me wrong, there are a few special situations. When someone comes in fifteen minutes late at my office, they have to call the, the supervisor. Hey, I was fifteen minutes late. This is why that happens, but very rarely. I, I, I guess I still don't understand why that would be easier trying to remember what time you clocked in, what, what time you clocked out. I mean, I thought the system was to stop all of that.
It's pretty standard for the deputies as far as start and end time. You're working twelve hours shift, so.
We can adjust that. Tom, am I, am I, am I wrong?
It can be adjusted. I just heard Brett say what I wanted to say. I'm waiting for you guys to be done, but there's a geo fence on that app too. You can't punch in from hours downtown here. How, you know, you have to be within a radius of these buildings to punch in. And we never had a time clock at the jail or the sheriff's office before, so when overtime came about, we kept that same thing of no time clock.
So, Tom, let me, let me just confirm this. You're saying that we can't expand that area where they can clock?
I do not know that and I.
I, I do know. That's kind of setting you up. I can clock in from home.
On your phone.
On my phone.
And maybe that's by group. I don't know. And I don't have admin access to the system, so I don't know. I know I cannot punch in more than a block away from here.
So I guess, why are we? So how do you do that, Tim? I, I mean, you're, you're saying you can do it. This doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I, as I understand the system and believe me, I'm no expert on the software, but it's a matter of, I mean, time you use the term, and I don't remember what it was, but we can assign groups and assign a radius where they can check in from. So if we wanted to say. Radius thirty miles, I mean, we could do that. I think mine's kind of unlimited. I suspect I could clock in from anywhere. And I don't need to clock in as a salary, but you know, I'd kind of do it just to mess with the system, I guess, nothing else, but this, this can be done. So we could set up a fifty mile radius or whatever we would need to do to encompass the entire county. And.
But we would only.
Do is download the app and get punch in.
But we would only have to do that for a handful. You just said there's only very few taking their cars home. I agree with that. If they start from home, then yeah, they should have the ability to. If they're having to drive in to pick up their cars, they should be able to clock in just like these hourly employees do. Salary, I agree, shouldn't have to. Hourly, in my opinion, should have to clock in. I thought that was the whole, uh, um, purpose of this system. Thoughts commissioners, Commissioner Van?
Well, like you say, it's, it's easy enough to do if they're driving in anyway. I, I know. I worked in oil fields for years and we had to basically clock in through our phones or whatever. And that, but we were driving to the site anyway, so that doesn't matter. Um, I can see where the resource officers, they're not coming this way. That's, that's a lot of extra miles and, and what if it can be set up? It, it's easy enough to do. I mean, it's a two-minute deal is. And I don't see where the officers should have an issue with it.
You, you said you verify it. How do you, how do you verify it?
As far as, we'll check the schedule, we'll make sure they're in their rotation. If there's an extra day in there, you verify that they're filling a shift. And you look at the notes to see what the justification is, is a complaint work, is it, the why there's overtime. So that's the verification process. So as you're reviewing each entry, employees' timesheet.
So this is still, and I understand the profession and I respect that. So it's still basically an honor system.
They still have to document. I mean, I, I, I can go a step further. If they put a note in there, they're on like a plane. I can go and pull that log and see what complaint they were working on.
That sounds like a lot of extra steps.
If I had, if I felt it was necessary for me to take it that far, if I felt the employee was taking liberty with overtime, I would have to go and do that.
Commissioner Scott.
We've had the sheriff's office involved with this whole overtime right from the get-go. There's been no secrets about why we put this in place and, and the, and the sheriff's office has bought into this or told us they bought into this right from the get-go. We have union contracts because the employees want union contracts. We have, to be fair across the board with all employees, if we require an employee to come into this building and punch in, one of the clerks, employees to come in and punch in when they get here. To start work, that's when they start work here. And when they leave, they're done working, they punch out. What you're telling me is you can't verify. If we allow, uh, we allow somebody to punch in from home, then we can't verify that they're working for the county. At the time they punch in. And that's why I don't really like what I'm hearing about. I can understand an exception here and there, but not a whole department exception. I expect an employee to come to work and punch in and start work then. If you can confirm to me that an employee starts work when he punches in. You know, and he is done working when he punches out. And not. If we're allowing this driving, driving, any, be in any place. I mean, it's too easy. These, you know, police officers are people too. And people do things.
And, yeah.
Why? Are, are you, are you?
No.
Above the law, above the rule? I mean.
Really? We're gonna go there? No?
Oh, I, I.
No.
We don't have to, but. We're putting this in place for a reason. And it was to know that the employee is working and we're paying for working time.
And that we're treating everybody fairly.
And we're trying to treat everybody across the board, whatever department to whatever department. Across the board.
And again, from all the.
Because in the past, there wasn't fairness across the board. So we're, we're trying to correct.
It's unfair that the sheriff's office is just putting their time in.
But we, we're putting a whole process in place here and we've kept everybody on, on, on task. I mean, every, this has been explained. Every step of the way and everybody's looking at us, giving us the New York nod. Yep, yep, I get it, I get it, I get it. And now it's in place and it's not being used.
I don't understand how the board wasn't aware of that this is the way it was set up. We were clear about when we set it up during the Nova time training, that sheriff's office was going to enter their own time.
Who, who did you communicate that with?
During the training sessions, during the setup process. It was, it was clear that that was the way we were going to be doing it.
Definitely not the understanding I had.
For us, I mean, I, I've done a lot of work with the Nova time to get it up, but if, if this was an issue, it addressed it when it was being set up.
I, I guess since you're not utilizing, utilizing it.
We are utilizing it. We're, we're utilizing to enter time. We're using it to track leave time, overtime.
So you're going through individually and putting in all of this, this information.
Employee starts, and they're, they either do it daily or by the week, and they put the hours that they work each day. So they're assigned twelve-hour shifts. They put their twelve hours in. If they work an extra four hours for a complaint, they put another line with overtime.
Who's going in and putting that information in the notice?
Employees.
So if they're here, so explain this to me. If they're here to get their patrol car to start duty. What is, why can they not clock in on their phone that's in their hand? They're in the parking lot, they're getting in their car. Why can they not hit start?
I'm not saying they can't. I said, we set it up at the beginning. We were crystal clear that we were going to enter it because we had people that were in different places, started at different times. And when we set it up, when we were working with Nova time, we said, this is the way the sheriff's office is going to do it because there's a lot of flow and add. We have employees that start at, granted, it's not a whole lot of employees. But to say that we're not utilizing or we're not, I mean, if we want to go to where we're making the sheriff's office clock in, clock out, we can do that. We'll make that move.
Who was part of the train? Were, were you part of that?
Yeah, there's a whole group of us that were.
So were you aware of this?
Well, you'll recall too, that was communicated to the board back in April, that. Who sets the parameters for the elected offices? And this was the subject back in April. Uh, so, yeah, this is not news per se. But the question then becomes, why are we sitting down and later on entering the data where if we're just punched, it's done. At the time.
So were you aware that this was what they were doing?
You know, I'm not aware of the logistics specifically of it. We did have an overall conversation about how the sheriff's office was going to do this, matching it with the scheduling that you were doing. As far as the day-to-day, I know I don't get myself involved that deep.
Commissioner Servic.
The Geo, if the Geo fencing can be. Solve that issue, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be able to. Use their phones and do it just like everybody else, frankly. It's an accountability issue as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you know. You gotta trust them that they're gonna clock in and be working for the county at six o'clock AM when they clock in, or are you gonna trust them to put the right information in when they fill it out? You have to have trust. Well, I do, but. And you have to have checks and balances as far as the supervisor that knows how we can check to make sure that they're doing what's appropriate.
This is part of the checks and balances.
I'm not saying it's not. I'm not saying that we, if you would like us to clock in, clock out, we'll adjust and, and go from there if that's what comes down. I have to talk to the sheriff also, obviously, to get him understanding where this is coming from. But. It's, it's a trust system either way. I mean, I can clock in at six o'clock and we've seen it at the state level where they sit at home for forty-five minutes.
What's the result of?
They get in trouble once they get caught.
Oh, okay, alright.
I, I would like to see that. I think hourly employees should be treated fairly. I agree there are exceptions as there are, uh, at every facility, but I think this is part of checks and balances. I think this is part of accountability. I was under the understanding and apologize if I misunderstood that that's the way things were already being handled. That way, the overtime, in my opinion, can be watched closer. That, that's, that's my opinion on it. So what, what's our next step? What do we do from here, Tim?
There's no action for you to do at this point. I can get with the sheriff if I need you to figure out what. Has to happen. Uh, we may need to bring the conversation to the union, make sure they're aware. There is nothing in the contract, obviously, that addresses no time. We didn't have it, uh, what we were bargaining. So we'll. Sit down with the union representation as well and explain that this is how we're doing it. Take it from there.
We got the legal opinion from the lawyer written, sent to us all. So my question is, with that legal opinion, how's that not true for all of the other unions? Has there been a conversation related to this?
Um, we really haven't had to have one. They, we just, it's been implemented and.
Correct.
Happened. Uh, but this is. Clearly a change and frankly, the unions were all aware too. I mean, we didn't keep them in the dark either. So, but this is a change that we just obligated to touch that pace just to make sure that there's understanding that there are questions, we can answer those. Uh, but it's, uh, just a courtesy call, nothing else.
Okay, want to come on this? You have to follow up?
You're talking to sheriff, but he's, he's, he'll have to get the Nova time helped us to change parameters as far as the sheriff's office.
For the individuals that do start from home?
That'd be across the board because we had to implement the time clock system, the clocking in, clocking out. It's there, but it's not being utilized. So we'd have to change rules for the way I understand it for the sheriff's office and the corrections department.
So is the corrections department, the corrections department is clocking in, correct? They're not clocking in either?
No. No, when we set it up, corrections and the sheriff's office were entering their own time. Employee enters their own time.
But there's employees that, and then I'll leave it alone, but I guess I, I, I don't understand. If there's employees that are coming here to start their day, to, to start work. Their radius should be very, very close to here. They're here to work. When they leave work. They're here to leave work.
And with corrections, that's even more evident. I understand what you're saying, but we kept it universal across both departments. The sheriff's office, which is sheriff's office and corrections. Sheriff's office was manually entering, we did it with corrections too. So it was universal so that we didn't have two different systems. That was one of the things too.
Well, I think we're talking on the same wavelength then because we're trying to do the same thing as you are, except we're trying to do it across the whole county.
You're trying to do it across the whole county. Well, I understand that. We weren't being deceptive or keeping, it was from the onset, we said.
We're not saying you're deceptive. We're just saying that we kept you on board every step of the way.
Okay, yeah, because we gotta pay the employees.
Right, right. Well, we just want to pay them for the time that they're working.
Item seven, G, claims. Who did claims?
I didn't claim.
Commissioner.
Uh, myself and Commissioner New Becker. It was a little. It was a little higher, but I looked over, I saw appropriation line, uh, Nova time, our annual fee was nine thousand dollars. The airport appropriation for the first half of this next fiscal year came in, that was almost thirty-two thousand dollars. Our childcare budget this month was thirty-five thousand, almost thirty-six, but. The biggest one was the state of Michigan, we had to pay them nearly twenty thousand dollars. In county general, um, we're up over ten thousand, but maximums cost us seven thousand. And Parks and Rec, we were able to get in the, the final payment on the fence program. And that was, uh, thirty-one thousand dollars still.
Yeah, I had a question about that, I guess, I, when I looked at that, is that something, how come that didn't have to come to us for approval before that was purchased? Did, did, I guess maybe I, I missed that as well, did I not know about that? Is that something standard practice that you guys know?
Well, we, I brought it up for discussion, uh, all through the year, every time we talked about, uh, reports. Uh, we, we did bid it out, the committee did bid it out. We had, uh, I had, I asked the administrator to come in and talk to the committee about. Uh, the policies of the county about, uh. Uh, levels of, uh, levels of bidding and, 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 uh. Those kind of things, so that the committee understood. So we did bid, bid the process out. Maybe, maybe one step got missed.
I, I don't, I don't.
In, in Commissioner, uh, Scott mentioned this several months ago at a meeting, uh, I don't know when, obviously predates me. But, uh, the board gave the Parks Board a certain level of autonomy. Over their administration of the parks. And this is one of the issues that I've been brought into a couple of, uh, park committee meetings, uh, to introduce them to county policies and say. This is a bidding requirement, or this is a, a contract that needs approval and so on. One of those areas that's on my radar that I would like to bring back into the county fold a little bit more. Uh, but right now, there's that standing decision from, I don't know what year, that. Parks Board would have the autonomy to proceed with these projects. So they did. In effect, followed the intent of the policies, but. The way they operate those decisions don't come here, they're operating like their own. I think they are, their own fund. Bit of autonomy.
We, we can change that anytime.
It's, it's on the radar, um. Any other things, obviously, that we're working on too, but yeah, that's, uh. You know, something for, for the discussion.
Just thirty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and nine dollars just look like a lot of money and I didn't recall the.
That is only the last payment, the total, uh, total cost of the project is over fifteen thousand. Now that, all that money came out of the Parks Rec budget, nothing out of the general at all. So, um.
Just part of communication?
Well, that's why I brought it up in every report, you know, throughout the year, I mean. And myself and Commissioner Vaughn, we both sat on the board, on the committee. But, you know, I mean, we can take that out, I mean, in fact, that was a couple of different commissions ago and. And, uh, when we were really bringing the. Parks and Rec jobs. Committee backed up the speed because they'd been pretty stagnant for years. Uh, so we could change that process. I mean, we can do that today, I don't have an issue with that at all.
I just think it needs to be maybe some further discussion, can we put that on for a committee of the whole? Anything else on claims?
But the biggest thing is, that was all, that was all taken care of money within the funds. Of the, of the committee, I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, we didn't make, uh, we didn't make any decision to pay, that costs anything out of the general fund. Um, no, I don't, uh, nothing else on claims, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve that at the sum. What's the sum?
Two, uh, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and two cents.
Thank you, yeah, make that motion and we approve those claims.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Newbecker, or Sir Buck, sorry, any further discussion? Any David?
Yes.
Rick Scott?
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Um, any unfinished business? Commissioners?
No, not, I don't have it.
Item nine administrator's report.
Few things, let's remind everybody, we do have our new commissioner orientation scheduled for tomorrow at ten o'clock. Uh, everyone here is, uh, obviously welcome to attend as well. Uh, if you do attend, don't worry about open meetings act obligations, number one, you won't be deliberating toward anything, but number two, we did. Post a notice on our board, uh, that states that there may be a quorum of commissioners present. Uh, obviously, again, no, uh, this be made, um, but we, you know, this is geared toward our. Uh, new incoming, uh, commissioners and. Block out two hours and we'll get in as much as we can. This morning, and I did send you an email, you may not have, uh, opened it up yet, but there was a political sign across the street at the annex. That I pulled up, it's sitting in my office right now, um, just, uh. Let the board know, the public and everybody's listening, and I'll do an email blast to our employees this, uh, this morning after the meeting. Uh, we don't put political advocacy signs on county property, uh, no matter how good or how. Important that the issue might be, we just don't do that. Uh, number one, I mean, there are ethical concerns, but number two, frankly, we're jeopardizing even some federal grants if we do that. So we need to just, uh, make sure that that doesn't happen, I'm sure the individual who did this was well intended, but we simply cannot do this, so. We, um, and follow up to the. Report that community health provided a couple of meetings ago, uh, we have, um. Materials here, I think it's the last item in the packet here, the flyer on the Carter kit training. Uh, just to give you an update on that, there is a training going on for first responders. Uh, that looks like it's pretty much a full session right now, and it's pretty tough to get our people in there, so we're working on scheduling a training for. Uh, our county employees, but particularly targeting people like transit, where they have the buses that go around and, and sometimes, uh. Uh, people that would benefit most from one of these Carter trip, uh, kits is, uh, client of transit, so we hope to get these kids on all the buses. Uh, as well, but any of our departments who are interested in the training on that will be invited to attend, uh, as well. Uh, item that I will get into more detail at the cow meeting next week, uh, yesterday. Uh, came across something about the local assistance and tribal consistency fund grant. Uh, this is an offshoot of the ARPA program at the federal level, Ogumah County is, uh. Scheduled to receive fifty thousand dollars for each fiscal year of twenty-two and twenty-three, so a hundred thousand dollar total. Uh, we'll talk about that in greater detail next week because obviously we'll need a resolution to accept that. It is, uh, really, looks like all the, uh. Uh, indications anywhere, it's just another ARPA silo that we were eligible for. This is, uh, pretty much unrestricted funds, uh, looking at the requirements, it lists everything that we do. Uh, including things like capital improvements and, uh, revenue, uh, replacement and, and so on. The only exception is we can't use it for lobbying. While our only lobbyist really is Mac and we won't give it to them, we can, I think. Make that, uh, commitment. So more about that next week, but that was, that was certainly good news. And then lastly, I got an email earlier this week, like Monday or Tuesday from Mesa. Uh, asking if I would participate in an employer advisory committee for Mesa and represent municipalities, which I readily accepted. So, um, hopefully it'll give us even more insight about how, uh, Mesa process works, can we take advantage of some of the benefits they offer?
And department head meetings?
Did have a department head meeting on Monday. Um, I. Put the, uh, call out to all the departments for tomorrow's meeting to give me a one-page synopsis of what their department does, that's a big challenge for. Departments to put all that on one page, but they'll also all, uh, have been invited to attend the meeting tomorrow just to introduce themselves. Uh, maybe give, uh, what we call the, you know, three-minute elevator speech. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of time, but that would be, I, I think, a way for, uh, new commissioners to meet the department heads they'll be working with.
Um, what about our, did you wanna give a brief, a brief summary of our meeting last Friday? Or no?
I couldn't, um, or, or, or you could even under the, the year reports, but we did have a meeting at the invitation of Gladwin County just to. Meet our counterparts, so there was myself, the board chairs, vice chairs. Uh, we had a registered deeds attend, our clerk. This is somebody, I think that was our contingent, Mary went as well, all of our counterparts were there from Gladwin County. Uh, met over lunch, a lot, very good discussion. Um, I think what they're looking to us for is, um. Just sort of, uh, guidance in terms of how we operate, they hired the county administrator late last year, as I recall. Uh, and they're still trying to, um. Understand how that whole process works, and so we were, I think, able to offer them some, some thoughts and what our experiences were. Certainly, you know, for me, educational, to, to listen to what their experiences are as well. Uh, so I think a very good relationship, probably gonna try to do this quarterly. Uh, if we can pull it off, but I thought it's a very good meeting, and I think any of our neighboring counties that we could do this with, I think we'll all benefit from it. So, yeah, very good, and I think it's, uh, you know, just something that we can build on.
Anything else? Now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, I'll bring it up now, I talked about training in the past, uh. And I talked about Dale Carnegie Academy in the past also, and we're coming into the, the winter, the, the fall months or whatever. I'd really like to, uh. Venture, take a look at how we can help our department heads, elected officials, maybe with. Dale Carnegie training or time management training, Excel training. Uh, ABXO can expand into, uh, to the employee side too. It, it has been done in, in certain departments by department, but maybe we can look at something to help people out. Time management, I mean, I don't know how many people I'm talking to and they're telling me they're just. Pulled but at so many ends and can't get anything done. And yet, we don't have anything that's so big here that. I can't, I can't understand why.
Would you like to put this on the committee of the whole, so for further discussion?
Sure.
I had asked you too about the wall of honor, you were gonna touch base with Adana, have you had the opportunity to do that yet?
I did, they were, uh, working out logistics with the people who prepare the pla, yeah, the plaques that you see on the wall, there was some confusion, uh. To an earlier order, the plaques came back and they were nothing like what we have here, so Adana was working with another vendor. Uh, to prepare those, and that's, last I heard, and that was, uh, what, a week and a half ago.
Cuz we're two years, we're two years backed up on that.
They're, they're trying, they're, they're moving.
So people know that we haven't forgotten.
Yeah, yeah.
Item ten, elected officials and department heads, clerk?
Uh, Brett Gilne, the Ogumah County clerk. Um, just want to, again, um, the deadline for anybody that would like to file for a write-in for any. Any position on the ballot is October twenty-eighth. Absentee ballots are going out currently, so if anybody is interested in getting an absentee ballot, they need to reach out to their township clerk. Um, they can get that for them. Uh, and we are just in full election mode and. Busy. Managing our time well.
Treasurer, I'm sorry, come on up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You're Ogumah County treasurer. Um, Jenny, I think she skipped and the shirt. You did get, oh, cuz Mary, I thought you skipped it.
No. I read the eighty, the item seven F.
Okay. So I said, okay, I'll see someone when I get up there. Um, financial reports, reports are in your right hand, did you have any questions on those items?
Um, I, I did, I guess, hang on, let me pull it up, I was looking at it last night and I, can you? Maybe it's the financial report you're talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, your investments.
Yes.
Euro Stinas, at the Michigan class interest income, fifty-seven hundred, seven dollars and two cents, just in the month of September.
Yeah, I guess why, uh, to me, it looks like some pretty significant changes, changes, what, can you explain that, like?
Investing for interest income.
Okay.
I've done some money movement to create better interest income for you. And then at the September loan, just for the Michigan class investments, five thousand, seven oh, seven oh two. It's a record breaker, in the, at least in my term of office. Um, there's a receipt, uh, sheet showing just your revolving fund investments. Um, I tried to give you a visual as well as just a numerical. So it's, you have two different perspectives of linear investments. Showing you maturity dates, the terms of investments, your interest rates, which are continuing to climb. Each individual fund that's invested. Showing your transit, where the ARPA funds are invested, X reversion funds invested.
Do you guys have any questions? I was just shocked, the, uh, at the Mills Township meeting though, the credit union came the other day and, and they, they were discussing that three percent. Interest and it's the highest it's been in years.
Yes, yes, record breaking. Um, I wanted to mention too, the Nihaf program that launched the beginning of twenty twenty-two, we have taken in just short of twenty-four thousand dollars and. Sustained homeowners with their property taxes over multiple years from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-one taxes, so. Yeah, it's been a good program for our county, helpful to many homeowners. The October fourth community outreach at Mills Township sadly was not well attended. The community outreach program that I organized with. Um, several, several resources taking it to the township hall to try to. Reach the people that aren't able to come to the county building, only about ten people showed up. So, and I'm disappointed that there wasn't more activity or more people attending when we tried to get the resources out to them as close to as we possibly could. So disappointed in that.
We can try it again.
I think I would have to go door to door with the resources and literally knock on doors to get, to get.
And it was, it was communicated.
It was, I had it in the newspaper for two weeks, it was on the county website, I had figures everywhere. I, I don't know how else to get information out to people when we have so many resources to offer, the home improvements and foreclosure prevention, but. I'll continue to, to network.
I get it, cuz I, there's programs out there for renters. And I tell my renters all the time, and I just can't get them to go on a computer and get free money.
Typical.
Yeah.
To encourage them, I'll keep trying.
I think if you try it again and ask, instead of just advertising, ask for a interview with the. And just get a, a, a news report from the paper. Not that people read the paper.
And she was, she was there, took pictures, was gonna do a story on it.
All right.
Plus they did a blurb, not just my advertising, but they also did a blurb in the paper pre, pre.
You know, a lot of people listen to that. Towel was, the radio station.
Radio station.
Uh, since ours, ours, your county is just playing recorded music anymore, but. A lot of people listen there and I found out that they're putting, they're putting a lot of our minute meetings or, or. Synopsis of minutes.
They do.
Of our meetings on, on their, on their radio station.
All the neighboring town, uh, counties they do.
Oh, okay, cuz I just don't listen to, uh, our state. Maybe they'll do a little story for you, rather than advertise, let me do a story.
Thank you, thank you for the effort.
Thank you, thank you for thanking me. Uh, we had a land thing meeting yesterday and, um. Our first property is now for sale, uh, we're working with Tom shortly to get the advertising on our county website, um, the property. Is at twenty-four oh eight First Street in Prescott, and it's just a few steps away from the beach, which if you've been in Tunus Goodway, they have a new plan to develop the beach area. Create a better basketball play space for the kids, um, so I think it's gonna have some great selling features, it's not far from the book and frog, which is a nice. Uh, remodeled venue and, um, are asking prices ninety-nine hundred dollars.
Yay.
Yay, let's see how it goes. Um, I have a second round tap sale scheduled for October twenty-eighth, I have two properties up for sale. One is a dilapidated property in the village of Prescott, the other is approximately a ten acre wooded parcel in Foster Township that has been purchased twice. And both times the purchasers backed out.
All your other properties?
Have sold.
Have sold?
Have sold, yeah, and when the, when my final sale is finished, then I'll give you a report on dollars, it's two. Have sold. Yep. And when the, when my final sale is finished, then I'll give you a report on dollars. It's two grand.
Do they give you a reason why they back out?
They don't. It does cost them a thousand dollar penalties. So so far I had a, our first round sale, we had what's called a reoffer sale, which was the um, the, the Foster Township ten acre parcel was backed out on the first round sale. It was considered a reoffer on September twenty eighth. It was up to forty-four thousand dollars and change. And then the person backed out after the sale. They were charged a thousand dollar penalty and will now be part of the October twenty eighth second round sale.
That's swamp.
No, it's a nice wooded acre, like just short of ten acres of wooded property in Foster Township.
And it's accessible. It has, it's not landlocked.
I didn't go physically look at the property. I'm just looking at the photos that are posted, but it looks like you're really nice.
Bored by a road.
Again, I haven't physically gone to look at the property. I was looking at.
Thank you.
I know in the past, uh, properties out in Ogumah Township in the, in the water district had been sold, had been sold on tax sales and they would back out because they were not aware of the tax, the, the water assessment. And at that point in time, and you know what piece of property I'm talking about, it's the one I ultimately bought. And at that time it was fifteen thousand dollars a year for water assessment. And they bought it and then found out, oh, I gotta pay fifteen thousand dollars a year in taxes. And they backed out and the second, the second uh, bidder was offered and they backed out. Yeah, the county ended up selling it for nine thousand dollars.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for your update. MSU, do you have something to add?
Uh, well, first of all, thank you so much for uh, approving the agreement with MSU. Um, I did note that, that it was approved, so.
You did or you didn't?
I did, absolutely. No, yeah, absolutely. The motion was made by Commissioner Vaughn and sectioned.
All right.
Uh, maybe, it was just, it was very, it was very quick. So, and I was trying to catch your eye, um, Commissioner David and say, I know that that happened. It was very fast. Um, last week I was able to uh, come to the committee of the whole, but one thing that I failed to mention when I was meeting with you uh, for the committee of the whole was that last week was national four H week, which is celebrated obviously across the country. Um, and I was able to send you all an email with a couple of videos featuring um, our four H programs, one of which is just a, a program for Ogumah County that was developed by a, a youth who was interested in sharing his love of astronomy. Um, and he created, he's a teen and he created a club with Enya um, for uh, middle school kids who are interested. And they had a great time. And if you haven't had a chance to see the video, I think it's about five minutes worth. Um, but you get to see kids talking about um, how they learned about um, astrophysics and, and visited um, the planetarium in Big City um, and had a visit from um, planetary scientists from Michigan State as well. So really exciting. Um, and then there was another video uh, for Woodmore Prescott area schools. We have a separate agreement with Woodmore Prescott area schools um, to where we have a program instructor present um, uh, and who's based in the elementary school, but who also uh, programs with um, kids there and most of it's after school programming, but she has managed to get uh, a student council begun at the, at the elementary school. And uh, for the first time and also start a school newspaper. Um, and the kids are really um, learning a lot about what it means to have a story and they interviewed the principal and things like that. One of the articles was picked up by the Herald. So we're really excited about that impact that we're having there. Um, after the committee of the whole meeting, um, I ran into a gentleman here who had a question about um, gypsy moth or spongy moth in, from Foster Township. I was able to connect him with one of our educators that works on forestry issues who's based in Roscommon County. Um, she was able to meet with him uh, earlier this week and talk about how they're basically creating their own spray maps for the township and doing their own scouting uh, so that they can understand how they can best um, defeat this invasive pest um, and maintain their forest um, in the, in the, um, in the township. Um, and we're really excited that we could make that connection. Um, this is the season when youth are, I'm sorry, I have notes on my phone as well, uh, when youth are enrolling for four H. Um, and so uh, people can sign up with uh, our office with Enya. Um, we also at the beginning of the month had an appreciation luncheon, uh, sort of an awards ceremony luncheon with over two hundred people coming together to celebrate the accomplishments of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two four H season. Um, and currently we have, um, we're promoting four H college scholarships, which are available. And the applications are due November first. And we have a couple of the Halloween events going on with four H as well. Um, Phil Durst, who's our senior educator for beef and dairy, is uh, also serving as the national president for the National Association of County Agricultural Agents. Um, and he is at a meeting this month in two, today in Tucson. Um, but he's done amazing work uh, in the last month, um, promoting um, the cheese industry in Michigan. Um, so every time you can add value to a dairy product, uh, you're helping farmers make a little bit extra money. Um, so we're really working uh, collectively, but specifically Phil is working on more opportunities for cheese and being able to create uh, an opportunity for northern uh, Michigan sheep producers by bringing in a specialist. I'm hosting at a nearby farm. Um, and as a result of that meeting, uh, someone who is interested in raising sheep is going to buy some animals and raise sheep. And also uh, an existing sheep farmer is investing in a new chute system that will help them inoculate their sheep in a safe manner. So um, we definitely see the tangible results of, of our work uh, here in the county and in the surrounding area. So we appreciate your support as always. And I was glad I could share that with all of you. Hope you'll check out, check out those videos because we're really proud of the effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tom?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Sorry, stick around. Pardon? I'm gonna stick around.
Yes, I'll stick.
I'd like to talk to you.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Also, um, I'll for the agreement, you had a strikeout. I will make sure that that version gets sent to uh, the university's corporation council for approval and then I'll send it back to you for signature, just as a process note. Thank you.
Perfect. Tom.
I just wanted to update you. I had some headway on the GPSs. Uh, it's installed on one of the patrol cars right now. It hasn't been a uh, pleasurable experience working with this company that's based out overseas. And I emailed Iosco County right from where Commissioner Scott is sitting last week during the meeting and I did not hear back. So I am not getting the communication back that I need to help move this forward. So I went ahead and to sign up for a trial basis. That's where the one patrol car um, came about. I just installed it yesterday. I was able to install. Um, I do have some preliminary pricing though. It looks like it's going to be four dollars per device per month. There's no long-term commitment, commitment with the company, but there is a twenty-five device minimum. Now, where my question comes in on that is Iosco County specifically said that they do not want to monitor any of our not patrol car vehicles. So I don't know if that can be segregated within the account. Because like Ray has fourteen buses alone, so I don't know if I'm gonna have to sign up for two separate accounts. And the patrol car one gets transmitted to Iosco and the other account with the rest of our county vehicles doesn't. So I'm still working on the details of that, but um.
Who did you try contacting Iosco County?
So they have a contract IT there. I, I, Mike Eller is the director of nine one one in Iosco County. And I reached out to him and it took a couple of weeks to get ahold of him. He was on vacation and whatnot. Um, I finally got ahold of him. He says, yeah, I talked to Adam. That's their contract ID. So he's the one that I work with in the past for things at dispatch to connect dispatch to Iosco County. I haven't gotten, he sent me back out of three emails, one reply.
It was uh, that meeting we were talking about with Gladwin. They do the same thing. They contract their IT out and we all raved about how fantastic you are.
Uh, yeah, actually I don't know, other than Roscommon, how many counties around us have an in-house IT.
Yes, yeah.
I know your net contract serves. Oh, do you, do you know who Gladwin uses?
I don't think they said, say, um, but we just said what a blessing and an asset you are. So.
So I'm working on it. It's not going as fast as what I would like it to be. Um, and there is, I'm clearly a senior of this project pretty much. When it comes to the, I'm, I'm a third of it, so.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
I promise, thank you.
Do you have anything from the RV? Okay. Uh, any other department heads or elected officials on the phone? Did I see Jeff on the phone? Hi Jeff. Hang on just a second.
I'm here. Can you hear me? All right. Yeah, I just wanted to give you an update. Uh, I want to thank Karen uh, for setting up the outreach. I, you know, yes, it was small, but hey. Any, any outreach that we can get to the community works. Um, secondly, my committee has selected an individual um, for a benefits counselor position. Uh, I gotta just do up, uh, make notification to him or her and uh, then set up, uh, see whether they're gonna accept the position or not. Um, that should happen here pretty soon. I'm hoping today. Um, and then we're moving forward with the move over to the state police building. Uh, Tom has uh, got fiber optics coming in tomorrow uh, to get that set up. So that's one step and then uh, we're, we'll work it from there and hopefully maybe by uh, next month, we may be actually over in that building.
Exciting. Any other department heads or elected officials on the phone? Uh, item eleven, manage on the floor. Any commissioners? Motion for adoption? Thirteen committee reports, Commissioner Serbrook.
And uh, Mr. Newbecker and I met with the sheriff's office, law enforcement committee. Um, discussion of possibly moving to the annex building. We are in discussions about another option perhaps. Um, given the building actually built and leased as exploratory, we're meeting with uh, the gentleman that erected the state police post here in West Branch, as well as the Tri-City Post. We're meeting with him and his architect on the eighteenth in the annex building. So it's possible, it's a possibility is there. District Code Two, Commissioner Vaughn and I attended. Not much really happened on uh, monkey pox brought up again. You know, there's a vaccination for it, so if there's interested, the information's on District Code's website. Attended West Branch City. Department Health and Human Services, and again, I appreciate the reappointment, Sue Hertz, the board. Met with EMS. We are in contract negotiations currently with the EMS. I think we're probably gonna have that wrapped up. We'll get another meeting next Wednesday. So I think we're gonna have that negotiation probably wrapped up by Wednesday. We've met with them yesterday. For the first time officially. But I think we're real close and we're gonna get that wrapped up. And I had West Branch Township last night. West Branch Township, businesses, we won, so. That's it.
Uh, Commissioner Scott.
Uh, I attended uh, Edwards and Portland Township meetings. They're, they're pretty much going over their stuff. Uh, Edwards has uh, got a couple of light issues and they're addressing them. Uh, almost ready to go to court here on one of them. And uh, they're both, both talking, still talking with ARPA money, what, what their ideas are. Uh, Foster Township, I wasn't able to make it. I sent uh, the report, my report to the clerk for their records. Uh, Parks and Rec, Commissioner Vaughn and I attended that, talked about the, the end of the uh, finalizing the, the, the fence project up its deer park. We talked about uh, just around some ideas about putting in the, in the uh, all up there. Just uh, nothing particular yet. Uh, the, the condition of the roof is gonna, we're gonna have to take a look at it seriously, look at it next, next spring. Uh, for replacing the roof up there. Um, the RV park. Looking at the end of the fiscal year, we're down a little bit over the fiscal year, the year before. Maybe ten percent down on total revenue. Costs were up, but we're still within budget. Uh, we did talk about some things that we're gonna need in the spring. The last day of the park being open will be October thirty-first. So then uh, uh, and we talked about some issues on seasonals and, and preparing a new contract for seasonal campers. We allow ten, isn't it ten?
Yeah.
We allow ten seasonal members a year. So. Um, that was all I had for, for committees this week or this, up to this point, so.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Well, Mr. Scott pretty well handled the Parks and Rec that we attended. Uh, the district health meeting, one of the other things was they're looking at getting um, bids for a new roof on the building for district health. That was one of their main topics. Uh, met with the nine one one board last night. Uh, one of the main topics was military renewal. Um, I guess a lot of people are questioning because on the the, um, how it's written up, it, it mentions the DDA and a lot of people are pretty excited about the DDA. That what they don't understand is West Branch Township, Ogumah Township and the city of West Branch are the only entities that are collecting for the DDAs. The other townships are not. And there's a misconception there that everybody's paying that and uh, they're getting quite a few phone calls. Uh, did approve their budget. I uh, give you a copy of their budget here. Um, yeah, a little man, I think that's why.
It's been a busy two weeks. Uh, we had an insurance committee meeting. It was basically just uh, an update. Tim attended that along with Brad with me. Um, rates went up a little bit and the, primarily the reason for that was the towels. The cost on the replacement of those, of course, is, is quite a, a bit more, but good news is, is other things went down. Um, accidents went down, lots of, lots of things went in the right direction, but uh, overall it was a good, pretty quick meeting. Uh, anything I missed on that?
Oh, very informative though. And such the chair said, our, our rates on the auto went up because we added cars. So that's what happened.
More expensive cars.
Expensive cars.
Uh, we also talked to them a little bit about liability and, and will that, like with the GPS system was brought up. Um, the body cams were brought up, um, implementing some policies and procedures was brought up if that would save us money. Um, with our insurance and, and it sounded very positive with things that we were doing, um, at least talking about doing. Hardwood Lake, I had a Hardwood Lake board meeting this past week. That was a fairly quick meeting. They meet uh, twice a year. It was related to spraying the lake. Um, they were pretty happy with the outcome. Uh, they sprayed three times. Typically it's four, but they sprayed three times. They talked about the copper levels. Um, they have a biologist there. It's, it's quite informative and, and there is a treatment plan that you can do to decrease the copper levels that lasts for quite a, a long period of time, but the cost is anywhere between a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. And they have a hundred residents on that lake. So they talked about sending a survey out with the uh, annual um, newsletter as far as if that's something that say they would like to collect a certain hundred or two hundred dollars over a five-year period to get enough money to, to pay for this treatment. So it's just discussion right now. They're talking about a survey to see what residents would like. Uh, Village of Prescott, I attended that meeting. Ryan Viter was there. I'm talking about a little bit about blight and, and the zoning and, and how them go hand in hand. And they had two properties that were our two residents, so definitely giving them uh, some hassle with the blight. So they also talked about their water treatment center a bit. Um, that's a very costly uh, treatment center for them. They need some upgrades, some clocks, some cards. I don't understand it all, but uh, talking about that a touch too, so there'll be more to come on that. Richland Township, um, cemetery, they're having some, uh, I don't know what their, their uh, titles are, but there's some newer people taking over the cemetery and trying to get everything documented where everything's at. Um, the person that was doing it has got some health issues and apparently has a lot of things stored in his brain. Um, and so they're trying to now get that put on paper. Um, so that way uh, it's, it's documented and, and there won't be any problems going forward. Also, the library over there, um, there was a library meeting for uh, Rich, uh, the village library, Mills Township Library, Rose City Library. Uh, as we've known over the last two years, they've lost a lot of uh, monies and they are in uh, dire need and, and, and danger of closing. Uh, Richland Township Board passed a motion to pay ten thousand dollars per year for the next two years to keep the village library open. That will buy them enough time to put it on the ballot, so then residents can make uh, the decision whether. the decision whether or not they want that library open. And they will just take a very small portion. It'll be a very small village. They're gonna figure out exactly how much, um, is needed. So Richland Township, they're gonna use ARPA funds. Um, that's ten thousand dollars, uh, over the next two years, per year to keep that open. Uh, Mills Township. That was this past week. They are doing two, uh, uh, treasure discuss. They are doing two placecapes. Um, one at the Skidway Lake, the other one is, is the park of across from my office. Um, Lappens have been, been involved in development there. Uh, it's very similar to what they have at Elbow Lake, Elbow Park there. Um, very nice, very expensive. Um, they're also talking about a new hall. The hall over there is in pretty rough shape. Um, the ordinance officer gave a report. Uh, one individual went to court this past week for some blight issues and our blight officer was very, very, uh, positive and very, um, uh, happy with, with how the judge, uh, sided with this and what the plan is moving forward. So it sounds like that went very well. Uh, the library also came to Mills Township asking for twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, they tabled it. Uh, quite a few residents were there, um, in support of the library. The library over there is, is probably the biggest out of them three that I just talked about and, and is utilized the most. Um, there'll be more to come on that. They wanted, uh, between twenty-five and twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, and they asked for any support. So, uh, they table it. Again, a lot of residents were there and I'm sure there's gonna be more to come on that. I, I briefly discussed in my report, the Hiving's property that was not on the agenda. Nor was it part of the supervisor's report as far as discussion that, that you had with, uh, Mills Township. Um, I, I asked for an answer, um, because we're gonna continue to talk about this. Um, they wanted to know why they should take liability for it. And my answer was, well, I don't think that the town, the county should keep this property when we're not maintaining it. Um, I also briefly said that you had talked to our insurance, uh, and it falls under the umbrella of our other properties. And since they have other parks, um, you know, hopefully that same, same applies. Um, again, it wasn't tabled. I, I don't know. I did ask them to please report back to you. Um, so I'm sure there'll be more to come on that. I said, we were talking a dollar, but again, this is in your township. You guys have maintained this. We are not. Um, we are offering it to you guys first. So that's where that was left. Um, I would like that left on the committee of the whole for next, next, uh, meeting as well. So we continue to discuss this. It was just kind of interesting getting feedback initially. And why we're not maintaining the property, what we're doing with this property. And now I came back with an answer of what we're doing. And that wasn't right. Uh, EDC, there is an EDC, uh, uh, I, I, uh, economic development on the twentieth. So that's next week. The speaker is going to be, um, oh gosh, where's her name? Sarah Lucas, uh, related to rural development. It is at the forwards conference center, uh, between seven and nine. There will be breakfast served. I encourage people to attend. Um, also I went to that Gladwin, Gladwin, uh, collaboration. I, I really enjoyed that. Um, I really enjoyed meeting their board. I really enjoyed hearing, uh, their concerns, their issues, and, and hopefully there'll be more to come with that with neighboring neighboring, uh, counties. So it was busy. I, I missed Logan. I didn't miss that one.
Oh darn.
Um, any questions for me on any of that? I made that as quick as possible. Sorry.
Two, two of my townships have members on the library over here and I I hear the concerns every meeting. And, and think what happened in our county was libraries got pretty used to all the penal money coming in from from I seventy-five patrol cars. And when that, when that ceased, you know, they, I don't think they went after a lot of fundraising during that period of time and they got comfortable living on it.
Well, in, in, in in contrast to that, that has stopped over the last two years, which is when COVID hit as well.
And then COVID too.
So I mean, I'm all in support of these libraries. Um, I have a lot of kids in my areas that, that utilize a library for internet. Um, that do some homeschooling. I, I am a hundred percent in favor of these libraries. They did. They did, uh, ask about some county funding. Um, I did tell them that I, I, I would bring it back to you guys. Um, the good news is, is Richland again is giving it until they're able to take it to the voters. Um, which in my opinion was I agreed with that decision. Um,
No, that would be on this.
No, not for two years. They've agreed to ten thousand dollars annually to keep the press, the Village of Prescott open. And, and internet is available, uh, like Mill said, internet, they made internet available in the parking lot. So say it is after hours, but you can come and sit in the parking lot in your car and utilize their internet.
They've got, you can check out hotspots from there, correct?
Um, yeah, I think they did. They did discuss that as well. I don't understand all of that, but I believe so. But the Mills Township also went into other things that they do. They do feedbacks, their feedbacks. They rent costumes. They rent prom dresses. I mean, that, that especially that most towns, Prescott too, it's right in the heart of of the town. Of the village.
Yeah. Do they take donations?
I'm sure. I think that's how it's, um, they, they gave a report. It was brief the other night at Mills Township as far as how that operates. But yeah, um, I think that's they, they drop them off and they run them out and, and they're trying to collect money and they're trying to help people. They do have one full-time employee, um, cause I asked why their, their income or, or excuse me, expenditures was thirty-one thousand dollars. They have one full-time employee there. So. And they have a couple of part-time. So, you know, obviously they're not making much money working there neither. So there'll be more to come on that. Um, you know, maybe we'll see how much is on the agenda, but that may be something that I would like your guys' opinion on as far as funding. I know we hit on it briefly.
One thing, uh, I've asked all the townships if, if they're talking about starting county MTA meetings back up. That I know the prosecutor liked to dress, dress them like emergency management. Like Bowers would like to talk with them and things like that, but nobody seems to have any idea if you're gonna start it up or not.
Oh, did you guys get a, uh, from Mike? And I'm sorry to be going back, uh, going backwards here, but I got a text from him yesterday. He got an award, the emergency management professional of the year. Mike Bowers for Aaronak, Ogama, Oskoto County, twenty-twenty-two. We should definitely recognize that as well. He sent me that yesterday. Did he send that to you guys?
Whoa, it's gotta be true then.
It is a plaque that he got and he should get recognized for that. Um, emergency management professional of the year population, uh, is on there presented to Mike, Mike Bowers. So congratulations. I sent him a congratulations. Is it on, is what Facebook on like a emergency manager? We're not friends.
Make a motion to, uh,
We don't need a motion for that.
So, so we can.
Let's do a resolution and recognition of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we don't.
I assume he said it to all of us.
First I heard it too.
I sent a clap and a congratulations.
But I mean, I'm, I'm saying make an official, uh, prove a resolution. And you can write it afterwards, right?
Whatever I want.
No, I'd rather, I'd rather personally, I would rather have a well-written resolution and we can read it out loud. So let's give them that recognition next time. I'll forward you that plaque.
Okay.
Okay. Item, are we, we good? Fourteen general public comment. This is any, any agenda items. Would you like to come on up?
This is public comment.
I did. Three minutes. Any, any subject matter.
I want to ask you a question. You mentioned something about the deer park earlier. About changing something.
No, the deer park, it was a fencing. The cost was on our claims, um, part of the fencing project of thirty-one thousand dollar bill.
But didn't the park should write pay for that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
My question was, was just as others, there's a pilot, if there was a policy or what the policy was, um, as far as cost. If the commissioners had to approve a, a high cost like that.
Okay. Let me tell you what the agreement was. Let me tell you what the deer park was like before. People like me and a couple of other people that go around and beg people to donate hay so we can feed the deer. In fact, we thought we're gonna have to kill all the deer and close that deer park. It was so bad. So I changed, I became chairman. I changed the, uh, meetings to be twelve months out of the year, sort of like eight months out of the year. And, uh, because of this, the old, uh, the old, uh, we managed to get the old members of the deer park, Parks and Rec to retire. And as I got them to retire, I asked Craig, he did a wonderful job getting new members on that board. And what's happened with that board and, and the agreement was they did all the fundraising because the board, they were broke. And when we found out that the RV park was financing the deer park too. Now that's stopped, right? That has stopped. The deer park now is self-sufficient. And, uh, the agreement was if the board was going to raise the money that they're gonna do with the money, what they want to do with the money and they clear the park to improve it. And that has worked out very, very well. So, I mean, the house has been revamped. Uh, board members painted it. This is a working board. This board went out there and cleared all those trees. So they put that fencing up. That board went out there and redid that house out there. So we'd have a resident that would stay in that house. That house was terrible, broken windows. It was, I can't tell you how bad it was. Uh, the board got someone to drill the water out there, water well out there for free, except they had to pay for the materials. But the water well driller drilled that well for free. So what I'm saying is this is, this is a working board. They raise all their own funds. They have, they have grant writers. They have done a great job. The board members that are on there that Craig got are really, really good.
We just wanted to make sure that we're following the policies and procedures because we changed a few things over the last year or two. And we definitely are. So we just wanted to make sure again, seeing that cost of thirty-one thousand dollars that we weren't supposed to be doing a resolution to approve that before we actually approve claims.
Okay. The agreement was with the, with the commissioners in the board is that you leave your hand off their hands off their money. And they can do with it what they want to fix, to fix that deer park up, to fix up Parks and Rec. And that includes the RV park. So like they said, they're running their own grants and stuff. That was the agreement, but I think if the commissioners try to step in, tell them what to do with their money.
I don't think that was intention at all. I think it was just communication and knowledge. I, I know, I don't, I don't think the intention at all was no, no, no. I think it was just communication and knowledge. And making sure we're doing everything the way we're supposed to be.
Okay.
No, I don't think that was. Thank you.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Just to let you know, we have found out since, since Mr. Gohan has come on board, we found out that the county has been doing a lot of different functions that not in the tune of the law.
I, I understand.
And we've had to change a lot of the ways that things were happening. And like bidding structures and stuff like that, and.
So you're talking about the process not.
Correct. There is a better terminology, a hundred percent. Making sure we're on the process correctly. Yes.
And I would hate to see this wonderful board that's done so much with Parks and Rec.
Yeah, no, 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 that's not the intention.
Because you're trying to control them.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Oh my gosh, come on up, sir.
Dan Zalski Foster Township. First of all, I want to thank this Julie behind because I'm the one of the guys that lined up to meet the other Julie in, uh, Ross Common. And we got a very good education about what to look for this company here for the gypsy, uh, spongy balls. Can't use gypsy balls. We're not changing our accounts. Um, we have some homework to do. We were told how we gotta go out and analyze if the cocoons are on the trees per square footage, per acreage, whatever. Gotta give us a little bit of insight what to predict for us before this coming year. We also got some good information on other sprayers besides the ones that we use. Um, and that guy uses, uh, a plane besides the helicopter we used. So it was a very good meeting and I want to thank this Julie for starting it out and the other Julie. Phenomenal. And once we get our committee to get our information for our properties, the other Julie will come back out, speak to us and Dave Ball is our chairman for our committee, but, um, we have these nobody's concerned about it right now, but we have to be concerned early enough so we can line this up. Cause, um, one of the things was trying to get the cost. You can't get the cost unless, you know, we know what we're gonna spray. Last year we sprayed over six hundred acres out of two thousand some, um, which was pretty good. We, 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 we need to know what we're gonna do for this year. So that's, that's why we had a meeting last Tuesday. And I said, it was a very, very good meeting. You know, she really knows her stuff.
Good.
Also, I also asked her about these little worms they have creeping right now. She told me those are oak worms and they're eating the leaves. Uh, she says it won't be bad, but at least I got my answer for that too. So appreciated the, the meeting. Like I said, it was very good.
Thank you. It's nice to hear.
Yep.
And thank you for speaking and coming to our meetings.
No problem.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Did she make it through for me? Any, any public comment? On the phone? We have a closed session.
Meeting.
Hi mom. Uh, we have a closed session after this and there'll be no other business will be discussed upon conclusion of the closed session. So I need a motion if someone wants to read this closed session.
Oh.
Item fifteen, item one.
I got to get to it.
You want me to read it?
Go ahead.
To consult with the county attorney regarding pending litigations in the matter of Perry and Glengateras versus County of Ogama. Pursuit to section eight, one E of the Open Meetings Act being M C L one five dot two six eight, one E.
I'll support.
I'll make the motion.
I thought that was.
Uh, can I get a roll call on that?
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn, Jenny Davis.
Yes. They have a motion to go into closed session at ten twenty-six.
Give me two minutes.
Are you taking a break or no? I ask because you're the one that usually wants to take a break.
Okay.
No, 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 you were fine.
All right.
Think what?
To a church.
What was the last place you said you attended?
Nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Last night. Like a live lines.
Yeah, I'll give you a break.
Make a motion and we'll go back into open session for.
We have a motion of support to go back into o- open session at, at, uh, ten forty-four. Can I get a roll call?
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Chris Scott.
Yes.
Fortunately with your.
Have a motion to, to adjourn with support.
Support.
If they ever say yes.
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 We are adjourned at ten.
Thanks, everybody for being on.
Hi Jim.
Bye.
Bye guys. Have a good day.
Bye you too.
Yeah.